And there are additional copies available, anybody who would like them after the meeting or not.
Is there any member of the audience who would care to address the council about the 2007 budget at this time? I have to ask this three times. Is there anyone here who would care to ask the council about the 2007 budget? Anyone care to be heard about the 2007 budget?
I'll move that we close the hearing for the 2007 budget for the city of Hudson.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thank you very much. Welcome to the 2007, 2006 November 20th meeting of the city council. I'm Scott O'Malley, sitting in for the mayor, was under the weather this evening. I want to remind members of the audience as well as council members that although I'm sitting in his place tonight, I still am able to vote for the citizens of my district, District 5. So you will hear me voting, something that the mayor normally does not do. Let's begin with the pledge of allegiance. Please join me.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The clerk will call the roll.
Harrowborough is absent. District one, Morissette?
Yes.
Two, O'Connell?
Here.
Three, Rodamacher?
Here.
Four, Wyland?
Here.
Five, O'Malley?
Yes.
Six, Cook?
Here.
Once again, we'll have a chance for anyone in the audience to address the council, to be heard. This is not a start of a dialogue. We will hear any comments that you have. For anything that is not on the, tonight's agenda, is there anyone in the audience who cares to be heard by the council at this time? If so, please step up to the microphone. Second time calling for the microphone. Third time, anybody with any comments? Will proceed. The clerk will verbalize the consent agenda as the next item on the agenda.
To approve the regular meeting minutes and closed session minutes of November 8th, 2006, and special meeting minutes of November 3rd, 2006. To approve renewal of the conditional use permits for Wiseway Motor Freight, for motor freight terminals at 1300 Industrial Street, and 1400 Swayze Street and adjacent parking lots with the following conditions: retention and maintenance of the required berm and landscaping on the north and west side of the sites as required perimeter fencing, no on-street parking of cabs or trailers, no advertising for the sale of trucks. The next required review held in three years, November of 2009. To approve the renewal of the conditional use permit for seasonal sales area with temporary structures, a garden center for Mills Fleet Farm, 1001 Industrial Street with the following conditions: time period shall be limited to a period from April 15th to July 15th of each year, compliance with the fire inspector's recommendations noted in the January 20th, 2003 letter. The next required review held in three years, November of 2009. To approve claims for payment in the amount of $340,996.86, a detailed description is available in the clerk's office for inspection. To approve the issuance of regular operators licenses for the period November 21st, 2006 through June 30th, 2008, to Lynn Doucette and Allison Rice, both of Hudson, Wisconsin. To place on file the semi-annual report of the community development director, quarterly report of the water utility director, the public utility commission minutes of November 14th, 2006, and the Hudson area joint library board minutes of November, or I'm sorry, October 9th, 2006. That is all.
What is the council's disposition?
Move for approval.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion?
I would like to have the quarterly reports for the water department taken off for discussion.
Okay.
I have a question there about something that's not listed on the report.
Okay. The, you mean the public utility commission?
The water. Yeah.
Water utility. Okay, got it. Absent that one agenda item, all in favor of approving the remainder?
The roll call.
The roll call? I'm sorry.
For the claims.
Roll call on claims?
Morissette?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Rodamacher?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Okay. Lee, your question.
We've been doing some work on cleaning up the water up on Kinnikinik and Wisconsin streets. There's been some flushing going on up there. I didn't see it listed here, but I'd like to hear what the status of that is from Jim. If I can.
Jim Frye, the fire chief?
Yes.
Oh, that's right, yes. Jim, could you come up to the microphone? I guess Lee has a question for you.
Just a minute, I gotta change my hair. We have been doing some of the flushing in the area of Sixth Street, Sixth and Walnut and Kinnikinik Street. I've talking to some of the residents up there. They seem, they said that the water quality has improved greatly. We're gonna continue on our practice till it freezes up anyway. The utility has, is meeting with engineering firm tomorrow and gonna kind of survey that area as far as the distribution system goes and then evaluate what can and can't be done as far as the distribution system goes. They've also taken, gonna hire the engineering firm to do a study to make sure that our treatment plants are working at peak efficiency and make sure that we're producing the water quality that we need to produce. That's where we're at right now.
Alright, thank you.
Would you care to move that we accept the water utility report?
Yes, with that addition of what he just added, I'd like to move we approve the report.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? All, any opposed? So carried. Denny, plan commission, the final development plans for 6,000 square foot prop repair and retail sales at 1820 Webster Street by Propulsion Associates, David Monahan.
Plan commission recommends approval of the final development plans for Propulsion Associates at 1812 Webster Street with plans to be amended to revised plans to denote proposed change in building height, lowering the height of building by four feet, and provision in the valley gutter along each property line by two additional two-and-a-half inch copper overstory trees between West property line and the building or save two existing trees of similar size. Advised plans per the city engineers recommendations provide a letter of credit for $8,640 to assure repair of street, curb and gutter, boulevard improvements and payment of associated inspection fees. Also, would like to mention there is the concern of breaking the street this winter to provide sewer and water service to the site or increase the water service, excuse me. And is it, is the timetable on construction gonna allow?
Could it happen with the existing building at this time?
No, not tied. I believe they're leasing that and it's not owned by Propulsion Associates.
They're moving completely out to this new facility, correct?
I'll move to approve with all the recommendations that Denny made, plus the new one he just made.
I'll second the motion.
Moved in second. Any further discussion?
Well, one of the things that I'm kind of curious about is, I'm thinking of Webster Square and the A1 archery and how this building will look in between them as a steel-sided building.
Well, almost all those are a combination of steel siding with some kind of a stone veneer on the bottom portion. So it should, it should be, and it's, it's not gonna be out of place by any means. I mean, it's, those are pretty similar. The electric, the electric place on the north. They're all metal buildings. You know, we tried to, you know, mitigate some of that total steel siding with the culture stone veneer on the bottom part of the building, so, I mean, it's...
Okay, I see that here now, okay.
It should, you know, it shouldn't blend in pretty good. But there's a number of metal buildings in that neighborhood, so.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it did.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So carried. Thank you, Denny. Let's move on to finance. Fire department request, Jim, I'm gonna have to ask you to change your hat again, to repurchase a hazardous materials trailer, the recommendation from finance committee is to approve.
Yes. Earlier this year, we sold a vehicle that had stored some of our hazardous material response stuff. And now that's sitting on the apparatus floor in the fire station and it's causing a lot of clutter. We would like to buy a covered trailer to store this hazard, this hazardous material equipment in and then potentially it'll set outside. Most of the stuff is able to set outside. It's absorbent bales and floor dry and that kind of stuff, so. Shouldn't cause a problem. Funds to come from the sale, the funds to purchase come from the sale of the vehicle that we sold, so.
Jim, just as a point of clarification, because some people might have their ears perk up a little bit when they hear the term hazardous materials. To explain it fully, it's hazardous materials abatement equipment.
Right, exactly.
It is not hazardous materials.
It's not hazardous materials. What's gonna be stored in there is not hazardous. It's what we would use for our operations or, you know, dyking material or absorbent pads, booms, trash cans, those kinds of things is what's gonna be stored in there.
And that's something that cost, that trailer cost 15 grand.
It could go that high when we get all the shelving and everything in there. Probably not. Trailer probably around, you know, anywhere from seven to 9,000. And I'll have bids, I'll be coming back. I just wanna make sure that before I go through a lot of legwork and go off for bids that this plan is acceptable to you folks.
And I'm not sure I like where you're gonna park that. I think if you're investing this money, it's sitting right there. There's not 24-hour traffic there. I think you need to park it in the back of the building or someplace more secure. And aesthetically, it wouldn't look good next to the building. I don't know if you've got a different option or not.
I'll see what I can find. I know we're running short of space, so.
Well, I'll move that we accept the finance committee recommendation to purchase the hazardous materials trailer and supplies not to exceed $14,000.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So carried. Thank you, Jim. Application of Chipotle Mexican Grill Incorporated for a Class B beer, and please strike the words "and Class C wine", they are rescinding that application for Class C wine license, doing business as Chipotle Mexican Grill, 1021 Pearson Drive here in Hudson. We have an attorney from that group, I believe, who could address us?
Sorry for the repetition. My name is Joan Bachleitner. I'm representing Chipotle in their liquor license application. Thank you for clarifying that we are applying only for the Class B license this evening. And also available to answer questions is Patty Mann, who is the area manager, and Saul Flores, who is the liquor agent. If you have any questions, you can certainly ask them of me or of those two individuals.
Any questions for this person? Recommendation from finance is to approve. Is there a motion?
I'll move that we accept the recommendation of finance committee to approve the Class B beer license for Chipotle Mexican Grill.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, just the clarification from city attorney, this is the last remaining B?
That's my understanding. Nancy can confirm that.
That's right.
And the, the process of when we are after renewal, could you explain the renewal or the process of when we gain another or?
Okay. There's two licenses that have been approved right now that the businesses are not in operation. So at renewal time in June, those wouldn't be renewed. They wouldn't be eligible to be renewed, so then those would become available. Otherwise, increases could happen either through council decision to change the number that we have now or when the population increases to the point where another one can be added. That would be like October, November of next year.
Or, and if they surrender those licenses?
Or if in the meantime, somebody surrenders a license for whatever reason.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thank you very much for speaking to us again.
Now you can tell her she's got it.
You got it.
Angela, please come up. We're gonna be talking to you for a little while here. Let's start off with the update on projects.
Actually, the update on projects, basically Prairie View Center, Prairie Point Professional, Hudson Hospital and Cry Commercial have all been completed and closed out. A few of these actually have been updated as of today. So those projects have been accepted and the paperwork is going through on those. Other than that, most of the tests, some final testing on Banter and North, but a lot of the other stuff is wrapped up because the tuminous plants are now closed, so. Hopefully, we're wrapping up for the season, so that's my quick update on projects at this point.
Thank you. Just to make us all feel that Jack is here with us, I'm gonna say thanks for that executive summary. And let's move on now to, we could handle these together, but let's take them separately. The bids for Lakefront Park Riverwalk lighting project are aging and are about to fall, aren't they?
The, actually, the shelter is aging quicker than the lighting project. But yes, the lighting project, the bids must be received by the December 4th council meeting at the absolute latest. But we should take them all in the very near future, you know, discuss them tonight as a whole. The bids for the lighting project, there were three bids received, as we had discussed earlier. There's three bids received. The base bid was based on alternating lighting as it proceeds down the Riverwalk. Or the alternate is for lighting just along the north side of the walkway. Are there any other additional questions on that? I know we've kind of gone through some of these items before, but, on these bids, but the alternating lighting, if we decide to go with that, is 116,393.50 or if we just want it on the north side, the bid was 96,682 dollars.
I'll move that we accept the park board recommendation to accept the low bid from Simon Electric Construction Company for alternate bid number one of 96,682 dollars, with the funding to come from the $100,000 of bonding that was set aside for this project.
There is no second. Does anyone care to make another motion?
I've got a question for the park board, well, for Paul. Is that, the base bid wasn't that accepted or did you change? And then Betty, can someone clarify the funds for the entire project?
The park board had unanimously approved or recommended approval of the alternate bid number one, 96,682. We had $100,000 in bonding that was bonding money that was set aside for the lighting of the walkway and that's what they had, what we had recommended.
I guess we have to second it so we can discuss it, right? Alright, so I'll second it so we can discuss it. Okay. Because I had a question too.
My other question is, do we have this funding package as we've talked at the last meeting altogether?
Yes. Betty can help address that.
Actually, the discussion at our last meeting was to hold these two items over for the full capital outlay discussion, which is coming up in December that Devin mentioned a little bit earlier. Betty, you're planning on December 18th for that meeting, tentatively?
Not for... This actually does go into the bonding process. This is from our Pat Frye bonds that we made here.
Okay.
So I don't think we have to wait. This is actually relating to the 2006 budget, a portion of it, some of this 2007. If you take out that summary sheet that I did for you, see what we did for funding the first project and then...
Okay, it's the next item that I guess I was confused with.
So we have $100,000 that we set aside specifically for lighting, separate from the...
From any other project?
From the other project.
Correct.
So this is like, we could, we could do the lighting even if we don't do the shelter at the end. What are the benefits to the lighting without the shelter? I mean, I see security as one of them, but what else?
Well, there's a lot, but there's, there's money already allocated for both, for both, or suggested for both projects. There's money to cover both projects already in-house to take care of that. As Betty will outline later on the next one.
And this is, Betty, what bond did, when did we?
That was a 2005 bond and that money needs to be spent.
But, did we designate it, when we took that bond out, what was that for?
We took out $100,000 for the lighting of that bond.
Okay.
We, we took out bonding to cover public works projects and park projects, of which $100,000 of that was designated for this project here.
Now, as a point of information, if you would turn to Betty's paperwork, you'll see that it's not really $96,000 that were, that's the bid that we have to vote on. But the total expenditure on the lights is expected to be approximately $112,000. So we would have to ask Betty where the additional $16,000 is going to come from.
Alright, I'll just refresh the council's memory on this and how we discuss it. The project look at in some kind of parts. We've got the lighting part, we've got the shelter, and we've got the utilities that are going to the shelter. When we put those three projects together, we're shorting about $172,000. With that, we also have bond posts and about $145,000 remaining from the wall project that are in on the wall project, so we don't know what that project is gonna cost. So if we apply that, the $27,000, what the park board chairman said is that he would use the park fees from the north side, the dedication fees, to fund that $27,000. Should we not get money to cover that, he would hope that will be refunded through donations of some organizations in the future. But he says that at this point, we could use that for funding that project until we receive the donation. So at this time, we're looking at fully funded project with these three projects.
Okay. Now, my question is, we bonded for $100,000 for the lights. The wall came in $150,000 under. There's other projects that I would like to maybe use some of that money for besides... That's why I would like to discuss this at our capital funding project, 'cause if we have that $150,000, 'cause we are gonna be redoing the wall, why don't we use that for the new part of the wall we're going to be redoing?
Well, I'll answer that. It's, again, it's money that was dedicated towards parks and public works.
Well, that was an issue. I have a sidewalk up on Hanley that I would like to get finished. It stops in the middle of a yard. I didn't raise the issue because we don't have the money, but now we have $150,000. That would get it down to Nama Coggin. We, you gave me an estimate of like $43,000.
That's correct.
I could use $50,000 of it to get it down to Nama Coggin.
Perhaps we could...
I mean, this is why I would like to address these.
Sure. Dennis, I'm gonna cut you short only for one, one reason. I think we need to deal with the issue on the agenda at this point, which is strictly the lighting project out on the Dyke Road. Now, what I think, I hear you saying, Betty, is that we can take, we can make up the $16,000 shortfall here by some of the money from the underrun on the Lakefront Wall. Is that correct? Is that what, Jim, do you want to add in here?
Well, yeah, yes, and I have talked with the, a little bidder on this and there's possibility to, for some additional savings. If the city were to order the poles directly from the manufacturer, we eliminate the tax on it and we eliminate some of the mark up on it. So the potential is there to save, if not the full $11,000 or short, $12,000 or short, at least a good portion of that, minimizing what the total project and engineering is, getting that lot closer to the $100,000.
And buying the poles directly does not affect the bid of $96,000?
No. Contractor's willing to work with us to, to purchase poles at?
Catherine, I'm gonna defer to you because what Jim is essentially suggesting is a change in our procedure here after bids have been received.
Well, he's already the low bidder, the $96,000.
Right.
I have other concerns though about separating out the contract whereby the city purchases materials in terms of warranty and I just, I, I don't recommend it. I'd like to see it at least discussed further or, I, I've not been in the loop on this, but I, I wouldn't want to have you make a decision based on that because that's not, not something I recommend and I know all that Jim has said.
They did send over a contract of how they've done it in other municipalities.
I don't doubt that. I'm not sure it's best for the city, though.
And, and it has happened in other communities I've worked with. It just saves the sales tax. They still do all the handling of it, the shipping and handling and the installation of it, which the only thing that it does is bypass sales tax.
We did that with the streetlights downtown that we replaced.
And we're having a problem with that contract right now. And part of the problem is that the city purchased the materials separately. So it gives the contractor the opportunity to say, "It's your fault." That's exactly the situation that I would advise against.
So you advise us to wait?
I advise you not to consider any discussion about going lower than $96,000. I mean, deal with the contract or the bid as it's been presented. Whether you want to wait to look at all the public works and park projects together, as Dennis has mentioned, that's a council decision. I mean, that's up to you folks to decide, you know, based on whether you want to adjust what you're spending the money for. I mean, you've got money, Betty's told you you've got money in the, to pay for this and you need to answer whether you want to wait and look at all the proposed projects together. 'Cause my understanding is there's not enough for all the possible public works and park projects.
Yes, that's right.
I had one question. Betty, you said that this bonding, this $100,000 bonding is gonna run out this year. If we wait until the discussion on the 18th of December, do we have a problem with that? What's our cutoff date?
No. The money totally has to be 100% spent by May of 2007.
Oh.
Otherwise, I'll be in arbitrage and I'll turn around and give that money back to the bondholders. I have that 90% of that fund spent by December 31st.
This year?
Yes. We have a couple of projects that actually, if we let the bid, it's considered spent, so I don't have to worry about it. One of them is this and the other one is the wall, which I believe, have we awarded that bid?
Yes, so it's the last council.
So the only one that, large one I have outstanding right now is...
So if we don't, if we don't approve it tonight, if we wait to the December 18th to approve it, you have to spend it between the 18th and the 31st?
No. Once you approve the bid...
Or spend 90% of it?
But your bid will be expired.
Yes, the problem. We have a bid expiring. I think the other problem...
Oh, yeah, that's right. Bid expiring, yeah, thanks.
...that we have to address, Dennis's concern. I think we have a committee here that's been basically avoiding bond proceeds in the last two years and have been planning and moving forward with that. And to pull that away from this committee at this time would probably be a little bit of a problem. So I know that they've, you know, put all their plans based on what they have in bond proceeds, so I do see that being a problem.
Well, that, they didn't plan on having extra money from the wall. That money is extra money. True. And I mean, they're using that money, that's extra money. I'm sorry, that's money we didn't count on.
I disagree with that because that money was earmarked for park projects for Lakefront Park. The money was allocated towards the wall. It was an estimate at the time. The money was, is to be used, I believe, for Lakefront Park and should be, the community's looking forward to it.
Public works, you stated just a little while ago, you could use it for parks or public works.
I think that the park board has done due diligence on the process of moving their projects forward and I would be in favor of approving this bid tonight.
Paul, I have a question. Most of the park board discussion, we're looking at the alternate bid. The base bid, the lighting on both sides of the walkway, I mean, I think obviously that would be a better choice. If we could do that, it seems like it'd be more, better public safety, having lights on both sides and cover more of the walkway. Is that what I'm asking?
It was, and actually the lumens is the same. So it's just more of an aesthetic appearance issue and the park board didn't think it was worth $20,000 to, to do that.
So with the one side, we're still getting coverage over the whole walkway?
That's correct.
Angela had addressed that at a previous date.
What happens is we wind up moving the lights slightly closer together to get the uniform lighting and the savings is not having run wire down both... uniform lighting, and the savings is not having run wire down both sides.
Any other discussion? We're dealing, just for clarification, we're dealing right now only with the lighting project. We've discussed other aspects of other projects, but this is just the $112,000 approximately, that's the estimate from Betty, to do this project. So, I'll call the question. All in favor of allocating this money?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So, carry. Angela, please stay there, and let's talk about the next item.
The next-
And that is the bid for Lakefront Park Tollgate Shelter Project.
There was a total of eight bids received on this project on Thursday, September 28th. The low bidder was Willow River Construction at $253,673, and this bid, if not approved or if not accepted tonight, will expire before your next regularly scheduled meeting. Yes, it'll expire next week, so unless you want to call a special meeting for it, it will expire. Other than that, I don't know if anyone has any questions on it. The, right now, funding for this, there's been the donation, obviously, of $50,000 from the Rotary Clubs. The DNR has allocated $100,000 to this project, and, and the city has matched the Rotary funds of $50,000. So, right now, you have 200, I'm sorry, 200,000, but you have 61, almost 62,000 of miscellaneous donations. So, for this project, you have 261, almost 262,000 allocated to this project at this time.
Actually, in addition to that, the park board had, correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, had allocated money from the, from the impact fee, Park A Trust Fund, to cover the difference in that amount.
The 15,632?
Correct. So, the money from this, to build a shelter, would come from bonds, DNR grant, donations, and impact fees.
Angela, correct me if I'm wrong, but when Don Gilbert, the head of park board, was here last time, he mentioned the $61,857, which is the part of the shortfall here, that is now listed as miscellaneous donations, those are not in hand. Those are, I hate to use the phrase "hoped for," but he made it, I thought, quite clear that they're not, those donations have not yet been made.
That's not correct. That's, I'm sorry, Angela.
Go ahead.
That's, that's money that's in the donations account, the park board donations account.
Okay.
And he was hoping that they could speak with the Rotary Clubs or other local organizations, or potentially, if Ron Kind funding may come through, that would pay back the money that is in the donation funds. Those could supplement or pay back the donation funds. So-
So, at this point, we don't have the Ron Kind donation of $100,000?
Right. That is not, correct. It's, has not been awarded at this time, so we don't, we cannot-
What is the status on that? Does anybody know?
We have not heard any more than-
Why move we deny this request tonight? Because we don't have the full funding in place. We can discuss this on the 18th.
The bid will expire.
Yeah, I know. But, I want, if we're going to do anything, I want 100% funding, and I also want to discuss the extra money.
Just to clarify, my understanding is the $61,000 is actual funds in hand.
Correct.
That's under miscellaneous donation. He's just hoping to pay back the city with these other Ron Kind potential, so it is money.
But, see, here's what, here's what I'm discussing, is that extra $145,000.
We're not on that right now, though. We're on the park shelter.
What about the water and sewer, is that connected? Folks, we don't even have a second to the motion at this point, so let's hold the discussion and see where we're going. It's, it's one thing for us to talk to Angela and ask her questions, but asking questions of each other needs to be in the proper order. Is, you have the motion? Does anybody need Dennis to restate it? Is there a second? I'm going to second it, so that we, as Lee did, so we can discuss it. So, now-
I think we need to be perfectly clear, the money is in place for this project. You have $50,000 in bonds, which was, the bonding money, which was set aside when we did our bonding a couple of years ago for this project. You have $100,000 DNR grant for this project. You have a $50,000 donation from Rotary. You have almost $62,000 in our, in the park fund, general donations fund, that's already in place, and then there was a $15,500 shortfall, which the park board recommended that we take out of the Park A Trust Fund, which is an impact fee fund, to secure the, or to cover down the shortage there. So, none of the money is in place.
What about the water and sewer, though?
That's, we're not on that yet.
Well, actually, it's, it's, I do have a question about that, if I could, Devin. Water and sewer is, would be an attribute of this park shelter. There's no reason to put water and sewer out there unless the shelter is built. I think we'll all agree on that. So, I think we should discuss them together.
Can we agree, though, that the park shelter, do, can we approve the park shelter without water and sewer? Does it have to-
That's my, that is my next question, because do we want, I got the very strong feeling from, from Don Gilbert, that he wanted to quote "do it right," and that meant the water and sewer hookup, which is-
Versus portable toilets out there.
Versus, yeah.
Well, it is two things. Number one is that it is a separate item, because the park shelter has a separate bid for that, which is, we're talking about right now. The second thing is, we do have the money for both, for both projects, and it's in hand, and that can be, um-
Where do we have the money for the water and sewer?
Well, you have $145,000 from the leftover from the wall, and it-
But, see, now, we're discussing the money that we'd like to discuss.
And, also, you have other money dedicated, or recommended from the park board, from the impact fee fund, to cover the, cover the difference.
Can I ask one question?
All the money's in hand and ready to be-
I think this will answer Dennis's question, or help me a little bit. The money, the $145,000 we're talking about, the leftover money from the lakefront wall, that would be used for the water and sewer here, was the, was the question about, were these dedicated funds to Lakefront Park? I mean, his question is, can they be used for other things? I don't know, I think I heard an answer for that.
The bonding, the bonding is, was set, you know, we did over a million dollars in bonding, some of that money went to public works, some of that money went to parks.
And this is what's left from the parks portion?
That's correct.
Can I ask the finance director of the city to help out a little bit with some clarifications on some of this?
Sure. When we issue bonds, we issue them with projects in mind. If there are projects that come in more, we have to find additional funding, or if they come in less, we can release the funding and use it. I would not recommend, say, we issue a 10-year bond, that we would relinquish any of that and do it on a two-year or a three-year project, who would take it on a larger project, that would have spent a more life in the project. In a case like this, are those fees dedicated, those fees were dedicated to the wall. That's what was in the issue, that's what wound to the bondholders. If there's fees left over, that doesn't mean we're doing the wall, that means that it can be utilized by the city, how they see fit, or turned back to the bondholders, to the holders.
So, bottom line, what do we have in hand for this project, the picnic shelter, and what do we pay back?
In, in bond proceeds-
Betty, I'm going to interrupt you. Would you come to the microphones, so that people at home could get a better hearing on this? They deserve to hear this fully.
The city issued bonds for $50,000 to match with the grant that we got from the Rotary. That's our bond portion of that project.
And the $100,000, in retrospect, we're up, we're fronting the $100,000 for the Ron Kind donation, because we do not physically have that yet.
The $100,000 for the park shelter?
Mm-hmm.
Actually, there is $100,000 coming from the DNR.
Right.
The $50,000 from Rotary, that gives us $200,000 at this point. $61,000 is coming from all the park donations that they've received over the years, giving a shortfall of $15,000, that they were going to take from the park dedication impact fees from the north side.
Betty, can I ask you a question regarding other numbers on your sheet? I'm speaking now of the summary sheet that you gave us, because all the numbers below this project, all other bonding requests, put us in the red. And if we did not spend that $145,000 that we, let's, for better, use of a better word, say "saved" on the, on the wall project, we would be able to knock off the deficit of $228,000 by $145,000. In other words, we have the funding because we're using the $145,000 for the stuff above the line, and putting everything below the line in the red, because we don't have the $145,000. Is that a correct assessment?
That's correct.
Actually, it's not, because the, those are, those are projects that the park board would like to, are requesting bonding for next year.
Mm-hmm.
They're not projects that are on the table right now, they're projects that are, that are, they like to see bonding for next year and year thereafter.
Well, aren't they going to be part of our December 18th conversation?
That is correct.
Well, that's, I think, makes them part of this conversation.
Well-
Because what we're doing is, we're taking money from one pocket and spending it, rather than putting it in the other pocket, where we could use it later on. Betty agrees with me on this, I, you just agreed to that.
Right, but the park board had unanimously recommended that we spend this money on, on this, this project, and, and request bonding on these other projects. In other words, the priority for the park board is that we, we make the Riverwalk, it top priority of, of the, of the city, as far as projects go.
So, they're also okay, then, if these don't get approved next year, not doing them at all?
That's correct. That's correct.
Boy, that's a, that's an onerous future. The reason I worry about this, Paul, is that we are in a budget crunch, as we all know, and it's because of the levy limits set by the Wisconsin Assembly. Those sunset at the end of 2007, but we have no idea at this point what may replace them. And certainly, something of some nature is going to replace them, they're not just going to go away and never, ever return. It seems to me that we stand a very great chance here, with all of these red numbers for the park board, that we're breaking the first law, we're gambling, first of all, on, on what is going to happen with the Wisconsin Assembly, because we don't know. And we're breaking the first law of gambling, is that we're betting the eating money. And I think that to say that we're not going to do anything, I mean, we've already got a beach house that needs help, right here on the mainland, not on an island, and we're going to say, "Oh, the heck with it," to build something else that is even going to be further away and harder for us to maintain. I'm not speaking against the picnic shelter itself, I'm talking about the use of the money at this time, when we have a budget crunch, and we're looking at, if we want to continue, as we have every year, with the park board improving its situation, upgrading for the citizens of Hudson. Grandview irrigation, I would say, is a pretty important project for all the people who play up there, the baseball at Grandview. We would be $228,500 in the hole before we even start the year.
Those are nice projects, however, again, this is the number one priority for the park board, is to do the Riverwalk.
No, I understand that. My, well, my point is that it may not be the number one priority for the city at this time, because we don't know, because we haven't gone through the Capitol Outlay Meeting. We don't know. We've got over $3 million of requests, and we cannot honor them. Something is going to have to be cut, and to put something in ahead of everything else, when it turns out, on December 18th, we may say, "Oh, boy, I really wish I hadn't passed that thing on November 20th, because as it turns out, we really need this, and now we can't afford," whatever it may be, and we can't afford it. I just think that that may be a little hasty.
If you want to vote to kill this project, that's your prerogative.
I'm not trying to kill the project, I'm talking about fiscal responsibility.
So am I. And all I'm saying is that if you want to vote to kill a project, that's your prerogative. This is what the park board has recommended to-
The motion was just to deny this bid. We can rebid it again after December 18th.
Well, certainly, it's not killing the project at all.
I do have a question on the bid. The bid expires next week. Do we have any inkling as far as extending that bid, or, you know, could we extend it to the middle of December?
Angela, is this a common practice? Is that something?
We held the bids for six, or we allowed a 60-day period to review them.
I think you'd probably have to rebid it, because the 60-day period was put in the advertisement for bids, and you can't really goof around with the, what you've told all the bidders, how you're going to proceed on, on awarding and going through the bid process.
But I believe Lee brings up a good point. Rebidding is not killing this project. Nobody here is talking about killing this project. I'm talking about all the, the numbers, all the dollars we have in red on the remainder of this sheet, when we haven't gone through the Capitol Outlay Meeting to determine what are our priorities. We don't know, because I've gone through them for public works with the mayor, and I'm sure that Don Gilbert has gone through them with the mayor for parks, and other departments have done the same thing, but we've never put it all together to see how it looks.
Well, that's true, but if you're looking at money for park projects, the ones below the line, the park board, that's like Plan B for them. Plan A is to do the shelter, and to do the, to the water and sewer for that shelter. The money is there to do this project, and, and we should keep, keep the ball rolling and get it done.
Ms. Romilly, I'll call a question.
I agree with you that that's a priority for you, and I think it's also a priority for the city. I think, though, that the prudent thing to do is to look at it all in an aggregate form, so we can, as the mayor would say, we can compare something to something. Right now, we're comparing it to nothing.
That's your prerogative to vote that way.
I think, I mean, when we're looking at it, it seems like we have the money for the shelter itself, and what we're talking about basically is the $145,000 for the water and sewer. What happens if we approve the shelter and the water and sewer money gets spent somewhere else?
That's an alternative.
That's a question I have. I mean, I think, I mean, it sounds like we have the money. We've got the DNR grant, we have the Rotary donation, we have the city bonds, we have the other thing for the shelter itself, but, I mean, for the park board, if, say, a bonding discussion for this next year, they don't, somehow that $145,000 goes somewhere else, what would happen, I guess, to the shelter? That's my question.
Wouldn't get built.
We could build the shelter without water and sewer for temporary.
It's hard to have bathrooms without water and sewer.
The contract, yeah. You've awarded that contract, and you've told that person-
Well, that's why I asked the question earlier, what is the position of the park board on building it without the sewer and water?
But the bid, the bid we're voting on is with sewer and water.
No, it's not.
I mean, it-
It's just the park shelter structure itself.
I would suspect that the park-
But assumes bathrooms, I assume.
-structure has bathrooms in it.
Yes.
So, that part of the bid would include, at least toilets didn't go anywhere.
Well, yeah, but they're not going to be hooked up to anything.
You get my point.
Yeah.
We could modify the bid, or we could do an alternate or addendum to add a holding tank, which would have to be pumped.
Oh.
As a possibility, but you still don't have water, so you're not going to have sinks or any kind of drinking fountains, obviously, but there could be some interim solutions.
Well, we don't, but we don't know what the cost of that would be.
One final question on the $145,000. Same thing here, if we don't spend 90% of it by the end of the year, we have to do something else with it, refund it?
We have to spend it by June, or May of next year.
But I have to have it committed before the end of the year?
No, no. Because I'm up at to the 90% mark. We had a $2.5 million bond issued.
Okay. On the whole, the whole thing.
So, this is not in any danger, we're not in danger of losing this money?
No.
Okay.
And Paul just said that they don't want to build the picnic shelter without sewer and water?
I mean, we certainly can approve that, because we don't, we don't have a bid for the sewer and water at this point in time, so if you think that you want to have a discussion about the $145,000 for sewer and water later, at the December 18th meeting, we certainly can do that. If you want to approve the bid tonight for the park shelter, so that, that, that can still proceed, then we certainly can do that as well.
Let's see, here's my problem with that. What happens when we have our meeting and we don't do the sewer and water? Then we have a park shelter that we approved a bid on, that's not going to have sewer and water.
Yeah.
That's why I want, I would like to discuss this all together, so we can appropriate That's why I want, I would like to discuss this all together, so we can appropriate the money where it needs to be throughout the city.
Well, Dennis, I'm not trying to put words in anybody's mouth, but it sounds to me right now, at this moment, that you and Paul are saying...
Tonight, we don't have a bid for the sewer and water, we have an estimate, and we do have money allocated that we, being the Park Board, has recommended, the allocation of, of the additional bond funds and impact fee funds to cover the costs, the anticipated costs for the sewer and water.
Well, it sounds like we might all feel more comfortable if we had it all in front of us at one time.
Sounds like you might be.
I am really uncomfortable with this. Can I call a question?
I was about to do the same thing, because we're getting into other stuff.
Can you repeat the motion, please?
Dennis, would you repeat your motion?
Um, I move to deny this bid this evening until we have our meeting for, um, Capitol Outlay Projects on December 18th.
And I second it.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
If we postpone this decision, do we, are we any risk of losing the DNR grant or the rotary donation?
No, we're not. We're not losing any money at all by postponing this for another month.
No, and we're not taking an early dry down on that either, so we don't have a problem with that right now.
Yeah, so we don't get harmed at all by postponing. Okay, you've called the question, we've restated. All in favor of the motion to deny, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All in favor of denying the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
It's four to two, the ayes have it. Next item is the request for an ordinance to create a new class of beer license. This is proposal, uh, this is proposed ordinance number 18-06. You read this in your packets, uh, the recommendation from our city attorney is for discussion purposes, uh, for first reading tonight.
No, the recommendation was to discuss, because in my view, there's a lot of blanks, or some blanks that need to be filled in to this ordinance.
Okay.
So, what I would suggest is that if you have questions, or if you, the issues have been identified in my memo, that you discuss those issues and come to some consensus about how you want to proceed, and then I will prepare the ordinance in more final form for first reading at the next meeting.
Catherine, I've got a question. I, I like the idea of putting the percentage in there, and I'd like to put a 30% percentage in the ordinance if that's possible. However, you want me to go about...
Sure, well, I think you, the council needs to discuss it amongst itself, I, I mean, for, are you talking about in the definition of recreation premises?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and you want to find out if that's something that, uh...
I just throw in 30% out there, can, we can talk about the percentage.
Right. Um, I mean, you can make a, I think we should have a discussion on the entire ordinance, or the council should. If you, when the discussion is concluded, if you want to make a motion to direct me to prepare the ordinance with X, Y, Z, you know, one thing is 30%, um, as part of the definition for recreation premises, then we can, maybe that's the way of proceeding to get to some kind of conclusion on this.
Sure.
At least, the draft I'm going to prepare for the next meeting. Does that make sense to people?
What you're saying is you, uh, you want us to discuss only tonight for information purposes?
Yeah, and then give me some further direction, and I'll come back at the December meeting, fourth meeting, with an ordinance that reflects this discussion, and then we'll have the process of first reading and adoption, if, you know, and it'll either rise or fall, depending on what the council...
Well, we do have time on this one, because there are no more Class B licenses available at this time.
Right, right.
So, um, if I understand you correctly, we would vote tonight, if we vote at all, on whether or not to direct you to go any further?
Yep, that's an option, too, if you want to, if this is not something the council wants to pursue, then someone could make a motion that, uh...
Well, I thought we already decided that we're going to pursue this, at least to get a ordinance for discussion.
Well, yeah, you directed me to come back with, with an ordinance that deals with recreation premises. If, in doing that, I kind of propose a couple of options on how to do that, options which we didn't discuss the last time, principal place, or principal business, and then this alcohol percentage. Um, I mean, ultimately, the council's going to have to vote on the ordinance, that's going to determine whether the ordinance will be changed to reflect this new class, or create this new class.
And so, one of the options would be that we fill in those blanks, should we care to. The council could fill in those blanks for you tonight, move for, uh, to suspend the rules, and vote on the entire ordinance.
I don't recommend that, just because I don't like, I just don't think it's good practice when there's blanks in the ordinance, um, and it's such a, I mean, it's, I mean, you could technically do that, but I advise against it, just because the ordinance, in my view, isn't presented as a complete and completed ordinance, and so it doesn't give any opportunity to the public to get back to you on the various issues we're discussing, the 30% principal business. But that's up to you, I mean, someone may complain that it really wasn't a final complete ordinance in writing.
Well, Catherine, I, I was one of the ones that wanted this information, so I voted for it last time, and I thank you for this. I did just some online checking, too. I'd like to make a motion right now that we just keep the regular ordinance we got, we don't proceed any further with our Class B and wine, beer license that we have now.
I'll second that, so we can discuss it.
Why the change in heart, Dennis?
I just feel, by reading this and just, um, reading other ordinances for other cities, I, it, I don't feel comfortable changing ours, I think we have a good one, and I got this, Catherine gave me this information, which I read through, and I just, right now, I just feel that we don't need to change ours.
Could I ask for a clarification on a good one, and, you know, this business has done, and I'm not just zoning in on one business, but the typical businesses are not going to be a bar.
I understand that, but I don't want to open ourselves up to any, you know, as it is right now, we get somebody coming in here practically every meeting wanting a license. If we change that ordinance, we're going to have them in here two and three a meeting. I want to open this, I want to open that, I want beer for this, I want beer for that.
I think that'd be the case here with this, with how this is written?
Well, the first thing I can think of is the people that rent our shelter down there for their kayaks, would they fall under the yachting? See? I mean, that's the first thing I thought of, and so, I don't, I'm not comfortable. I voted for it to get the information, I got the information, and I feel that we can keep what we've got.
Well, that brings up a question I had under Section C, where we had Paul, Dennis, Curling, is that a legislative list from the, um, Wisconsin, where this is the list, or can it be challenged to add, uh, different things?
That list has virtually nothing to do with Hudson's situation, or with the definition of recreation premises under the statute for Class B beer licenses. It's simply a permit that, for some reason, we don't know exactly why, the legislature has authorized the Department of Revenue to issue beer permits to these types of private clubs that are open only to members, and are located only in municipalities that do not issue Class B beer licenses. So, it has nothing to do with the statute we're operating under. I think it was put forward only for the reason that, that the legislature has authorized some kind of beer permit to be issued to these types of clubs, and since perhaps the legislature thinks these types of clubs should be treated differently, it might be okay, or you could make the argument that if it's reasonable for the legislature, it's reasonable for Hudson. To me, it's kind of a, it's a thin argument for reasonableness. The classification has nothing to do with the statute the city is operating under.
Could you give me, kind of restate the definition of a private club, if that...
Well, that's, I just had a feeling, it's defined in the statute, and it's, um, basically, well, let me just look at it. Organization whether incorporated or not, used exclusively for club purposes, operated solely for recreational, fraternal, social, patriotic, political, benevolent, or athletic purpose, but not for pecuniary gain, and which only sells alcohol beverages incidental to its operation. So, I think the key there is it's not for pecuniary gain, it has to be for one of those purposes. If it's a for-profit business, it's not going to qualify as a club. That's why I think the council gets off track when it looks at that list of, um, types of clubs as a basis for proceeding in this situation.
If I may, Catherine, I'd like to address the, I think Randy was on to something when he mentioned that, you know, he did, this was a motion, or this was a petition brought to us by a, a business owner who had lost his license through non-compliance.
Well, let's not say that, because it makes it...
Well, it's true, though, you know...
The business was not eligible for a license under city code. Unfortunately, that fact was overlooked by both the applicant and the city when it originally granted the business's license.
My point being that if this were a, a need in the business community in our city, we would have heard about it from other businesses, I believe. That, I believe, we are trying to solve a problem that doesn't exist. There is no need for this ordinance. We've never been asked for this ordinance. I don't think we need it today. One business needs it, unfortunately, it's a moot point, because there are no licenses available for that business. I think enacting this ordinance is just putting way too much icing on the cake. It's just completely unnecessary. It's not going to do the city of Hudson any good to issue more licenses for alcoholic beverages, that we already have trouble monitoring the licenses we've got. We found through the licensing process, which we do, we relicence, as Nancy mentioned earlier, every summer, midsummer, end of June, we found in the last relicensing process there were bars here in Hudson operating, serving alcohol without licensed operators on staff. In other words, it was just private citizens selling alcohol to other private citizens, totally illegal. We did not have the resources at that time to monitor that situation, that's why the situation existed. Why would we create, when no one is asking us to do so, except this one person? Why would we create an ordinance that calls for even more monitoring and harder to monitor, because you don't have food receipts there that you can actually count? It seems to me that we are trying to, as I said, come up with an answer for a problem that does not exist, and we would in fact be creating problems for ourselves in the future.
I would, we've, we've already taken steps to correct the compliance issue, and we're not creating an ordinance, we're creating an amendment to an ordinance.
Well, Paul, you know what I mean, here. We're issuing licenses to which are currently unavailable.
I, I look at these, these categories, I don't see what we're concerned about, as far as...
Well, in Catherine's memo, she mentions that the, we might, this, this may not stand up to court question, when the pool hall operator comes in and says, what's the difference between my amusement, my adult amusement, and their adult amusement? The court might find some difficulty in delineating between those two, and the next thing you know, we've got some places that we don't want serving beer.
What's wrong with a nice pool hall?
How many nice pool halls do you know?
What I'm saying...
You know, I, I beg to differ with your argument in the case that we're, we're trying to create an ordinance that doesn't exist in your theory. When I have two young kids, and I like to have a beer, and the only alternative is a bowling alley, and I believe this place is nonsmoking, where am I going to take these kids? Is there another place to do that in the city of Hudson? I don't think so. This is not going to hurt anybody, this is not deter, you know, that, your, your argument is, is false. There's a ton of young families in this, in this community that want an alternative to something, let's say, the bowling alley. That's a great business, too, I hate to identify that as the only one, but that seems to be the only place we'd go to have a birthday party for my kids. So, I don't see the harm in this, and I, and I, I won't see the harm in this.
Any other comments?
I have to agree with Scott's comments, I still, although I have no problem with, I have no problem with the business itself, and I wrestle with this change in the ordinance, because I think it's unfortunate that it was issued license in the first place, and, but I just, I feel like it's being changed for one person, and I don't have a problem with that business, but I don't think there's been a, really a stated need, I haven't heard from anybody that said, I wish we had more places to do this, why didn't we change the ordinance? It just, usually when we change the ordinance, it's because there's an issue in the city, not a specific reason, not a specific business that needs to do it, and I just concern that it's going to get the impression that we changed ordinance for one person when they come in.
Good point. The, um, is the ordinance as written poorly written? The reason I ask is because, you know, over and over again, we talk about the ordinance state that 50% of the sales, you know, that a restaurant's involved, and 50% of the sales must be restaurant sales. I'm wondering how that could have been misinterpreted the first time?
I don't think it was misinterpreted. I, I think it was overlooked, because the statute does not require a premises, uh, in order to get a Class B beer license to be a restaurant, but cities, municipalities can have additional regulations that are in conflict with the statute. City of Hudson has decided to do that, and has said, we only want Class B beer licenses to go to restaurants.
But our...
I can't, I, I'm, it was overlooked, that's all I, there's, that's about the only explanation for that, for the situation we're in.
Well, Catherine, may I ask you this question? This person has advice of counsel. Do you really believe that application, went through the entire application process, and can now say, I didn't know that I was supposed to serve food?
I'm not going to speculate on what the business knew or didn't know. All, I, I mean, the fact is, it was not eligible for a license, it applied for a license, the city issued it in error, whether they knew or not, I don't know.
Actually, the city, if I may disagree, the city issues the license, it is then up to the establishment to start serving the food, right?
Well...
So, he did not, he elected not to start serving the food. Any, excuse me, but we're talking about a business that has no bearing on the issue at hand.
I, I think really Kara is right, that what you're looking at is an ordinance amendment creating a new class of business that's eligible for a Class B beer license, and you, while it came to the city because of this mistake, you should not make your decision based on that. That's almost irrelevant at this point. You should look at the classification and decide, is this something that you want for the city? If it is, that's, that's certainly a fine judgment call you can make, but don't make your decision based on whether, based on the fact that it was issued by mistake. That happened, but that's not the, the reason why you should be pulling against this ordinance.
And I, I think the, the fear is here, which still isn't, I don't think terribly well detailed, is some list of, here are the possible other businesses that would come forward saying, or could possibly come forward saying, we're not sure how big a, is this just going to be one business, or is it going to be 100 of them? We don't know. I mean, you can speculate, but I, I don't know if there's any way to, to find that.
Well, you know, we don't know what business someone's going to come up with in the future. What you're doing is you're creating a new class, it's, I guess, one thing to keep in mind, maybe, is it's much more difficult to close the door, as you're finding out, than to open it. And each time there's, someone will make some differentiation, or say, we're just like this business, you're going to have to deal with it. Whether you want to, or where you think that's a concern, that's up to you to decide, but they, it's this recreation that, I mean, you've tried to define it, and we've tried to get it narrowed down with, with some kind of percentage, but it just leads to, you know, more people, potentially more people coming in, and my, I guess what I would say is a video arcade type of business. I know, I mean, I was just downtown Minneapolis, and they exist, and that could conceivably, especially with the indoor golf simulator, have an argument that, how are we any different from that? And then you'll have to decide that.
Well, Catherine, that sounds like a good cue for to call a question. Oh, I'm sorry, sir? Please step up to the microphone.
My son, Mike, who, who owns a business, is, was called out of town. I would like to just say...
I'm sorry to interrupt you.
My name is Don Christopherson.
And your address?
And I, I live in Bruce, Wisconsin.
Okay.
I used to be a resident of Hudson, and was on the Hudson Planning Commission for 10 years in the 70s. But I, I guess that's irrelevant. The point, I can appreciate your, your, your discussions here tonight. I, I think there's been a lot of good discussion. I can recall having the same type of discussions in the 70s relative to the beer and the, and the liquor that was served downtown Hudson. Believe me, it was not a pretty sight, and we stretched our minds trying to prevent things from happening. Uh, when, I, I recognize that there is a problem with, there is really no problem with our business, but there might be with something else. business, but there might be with something else. We provide a service to a lot of, a lot of people playing golf in the wintertime, and they play inside. I don't know how many of you have been to our facility and have seen what we provide. These are not pinball-type machines. These are very expensive machines that you use your own golf club and hit the ball. And you have 39 different pro-type of golf courses you're playing. If you get in the woods, you're in the woods, and you have to hit out of them. So it isn't something that, that's just anybody can put up. We put up a lot of money based on the city approving it. Now, in the city approval, the Finance Committee was to make a investigation and report back to the City Council about our qualification. And I don't know the, I don't recall the exact words, but a burden was put on the Finance Committee to report to the Council. It was approved by the Council. My problem is that I invested in that, based on that approval. Now, I know that's nothing to be considering here tonight, but the point is, is that I knew that there were things wrong. I mean, the liquor licenses were of question at the time when, in the 70s. When the approval came through to Mark, and he got, and he got the license, I believe that, that then his business could succeed. And he even had this put in his business plan. Had he not had this in his business plan or anything, I would not have invested my money in this. Now, I'm shaking a little bit tonight because I have a lot of money invested in this myself. And just to pass this off as some kind of a fluky business, I think would be a short-sightedness in a way, because I don't know how many new things that might come in. Are you afraid of, are you letting the bad things ruin some of the potential good things that could come here? I guess that's my question to you, is that there may, I don't know of any other indoor golf that's happening, but there, you know, there may be something else that comes in. If you would come up, I don't know how many of you have been in our facility, if you would come up and see what we have, and see how we're operating. Smoke-free, very little, very little alcohol consumption. Unfortunately, we have a group of people from age 21, 21 to 40, that like to have a social beer while they're playing golf. I don't know if any of you play golf, but that's, they enjoy that. The retired people that use our place require coffee, and that's what they're served. Everyone in our place has had a license to serve, everyone. I guess, I understand where this is going. I wish it wouldn't have gone that way. I would plead you to consider either thinking about this or delaying it to a certain extent. There was a possibility of saying, "Well, there is no more beer licenses available." But there might be. And all we need is a might be. We'll still try to work with you to do everything we can to prevent things that are bad happening in any part of the city. We want this to be as good for the City of Hudson as you do. And I'm sure that somewhere along the line, there'll be somebody else wanting to provide some kind of a business that will provide the same kind of good service that we're providing. So please don't overlook us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. You are correct, this action tonight is not about your son's establishment, and we've never had any problem with your son's establishment. The question has been called. Dennis, would you please, since it's been some time that's passed, would you restate your motion?
It was a motion to deny, or to tell Catherine to stop rewriting the ordinance. The current ordinance is acceptable. Is that close enough?
Does everybody understand? Okay, let's take the vote. All in favor of telling Catherine to just cease her work on this, ayes. Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All in favor of Catherine continuing to work on this, please signify by the same sign.
Aye.
You should just have them vote on the motion. I mean, they would vote against that motion.
Okay, vote against. I missed it. Vote against the motion. All in favor of denying the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Denying? No, I'm confused. What are we denying?
A yes vote.
Further work on the, a yes vote would stop any work on amending the ordinance. No vote would just, the motion would be dead. You'd have to come up with another motion.
So let's vote again.
Raise hands.
Scott.
Raise hands.
Go call.
Okay, let's just raise hands. Show of hands, all those in favor of Dennis's motion, which is to stop work on this, please raise your hand.
Aye.
Four. I assume the other two would be two. Four to two, the motion carries. Thank you. Now, to continue in our vein of non-controversial slam dunk, easy agenda items, let's go to Vine Street Corridor Traffic Study. Angela, gonna have to ask you to, or do you want Sheldon? You're waving this off as fast as you can. I'd like to introduce Mr. Sheldon Johnson of our consulting engineering firm, VRA. He is their traffic specialist, and he has spoken to the council before.
Mr. President, members of the council, ladies and gentlemen, thanks for that auspicious City Council requested that we conduct a corridor study, Vine Street, between Carmichael and Second Street. We have done that. We did submit a document which you have received in your packets. And without taking a whole lot of your time, let me just give you a brief overview of what's in there. We've conducted reconnaissance of the roadway to note number of lanes along the roadway and at intersections, to note certain types of signing and location of signing. We've collected all available traffic volume data that exists for a daily, on a daily basis for some of the roadways in the area. We've conducted peak period traffic counts at three of the intersections, those being Vine at Diamond, at Grandview, and at Wisconsin, which are all controlled by always-stop control. We've done a crash analysis. We received the crash data along the corridor from the city. And we've conducted analysis of crash data along the roadway and at certain specified intersections that we considered critical to the operation of the corridor. We also did some pedestrian counts. When we counted the three intersections, we noted the number of pedestrians utilizing the intersections. We did some travel time runs along the corridor, eastbound, westbound during peak periods of the day, morning and evening. We also conducted some travel time runs of some alternative routes that we suspected people might be using along the corridor to determine if there was a time savings to use these alternative routes rather than to stay on Vine Street. And we did service-level analyses of these particular critical intersections, those being the three all-way controlled stop locations at Diamond, Grandview, and Wisconsin. Lot of data's in this report. It says, it says a lot of different things. And I don't think I'm going to go through it at this point in time, issue by issue, but I'm going to talk about some of the conclusions that were reached. The corridor itself functions at an acceptable level of service. For a roadway such as Vine Street with left and right turn lanes at the critical locations, two-lane roadway, et cetera, planning-level assumption shows that you can handle approximately 12 and 1/2 thousand to 13,000 vehicles per day. The highest daily volume on the route right now is over by, between Carmichael and Diamond, approximately is 10,700 vehicles per day. And the volumes taper off from that point as you move to the west to where it's approximately 7,000 vehicles per day down by the Second Street signal, and by the Third and Fourth Street all ways stops. So the service level of the roadway is adequate. It's handling the volumes in an acceptable manner. The roadway's classified as an arterial roadway, and looking at your functional classification plan for your city, that is in our mind a correct classification for the roadway. The crash results, basically, the route itself has a, I shouldn't say a good crash history, but it has a crash history that's within acceptable limits if you compare similar roadways across the state of Wisconsin. So it's operating a little better in that respect. There is one intersection that has a crash rate that's higher than we would expect for an intersection of that type, and that's the Vine and Wisconsin Street intersection. Pedestrian safety is always a big concern. We didn't find a lot of pedestrians at the three intersections. The peaks were 19, I think, pedestrians at Grandview and Diamond, but we had approximately 90 at Wisconsin, adjacent to the high school. I will note that most of those pedestrians were school groups, sporting groups, et cetera, I think out on cross-country runs or things like that, physical training, what have you, because they appeared in groups doing their cross-country running and training and exercise and what have you. So the pedestrian loads at these intersections is not heavy. And again, I could go into a lot of detail, but I won't. I'll just talk about what we're recommending you consider. This is a difficult corridor in the respect that technically it serves the traffic very well. The issue that brought this corridor analysis about is again the always-stop control at Diamond and Vine, which has the YMCA on the north side, which attracts good traffic, quite a bit of traffic, and has some pedestrian activity. 19 persons in a two-hour peak period. Again, not a lot of pedestrians. Technically, the traffic engineer would look at those volumes and say, "Doesn't warrant a four-way stop." Technically, you could look at Grandview, and you could look at Wisconsin and say, "According to the technical data put out by the state of Wisconsin, it doesn't warrant an always-stop intersection." However, there's other considerations. Wisconsin Street has school traffic, high school traffic. People driving through that intersection, going in and out of the high school area, consists of people dropping off students at school, visitors, faculty, school buses, and probably as important, or most important, high school students. Now, historically, they are aggressive drivers, so safety gets to be a little bit more of a concern. Probably, maybe one of the reasons the accident rate's a little higher at that location, because those drivers are, excuse me, normally more aggressive. So an always-stop control there is, I think, a good measure for that intersection. If you look at Grandview, Grandview is a collector roadway, north-south through that entire residential area, all the way now on the freeway. Very important collector roadway, carries enough traffic and serves some residential to the north. And looking at that, I believe that an always-stop control there is a good, is a good, is probably a good measure because of the collector status of Grandview. Two important roadways intersecting. The intersection of Diamond, again, technically, the numbers, the traffic numbers, do not suggest always-stop control. We are suggesting in this document that you revert to the cross-street stop control, where Diamond and the YMCA roadway be controlled by stop signs, Vine Street flow free. But if you determine that's what you wish to do, you must make some improvements to that intersection for pedestrians. There are a number of treatments you could do. Pavement crosswalks, using a different colored brick, which I know you've seen elsewhere, alerts people to the fact there's a crosswalk. Probably choke the roadway down. You've got a four-lane section across there. You choke it down by the use of curbing. You lessen the distance for pedestrians to cross. That is one method, one way you could do it. When you do that, however, you're going to lose the right turn lanes. There's quite a few right turns going westbound, going north into the Y site. And I was watching it again this evening, and it just amazes me, watching those right turners. Strong majority of them, they don't stop, they roll, because they don't have much conflicting traffic to look at. All they look at is, "Is there somebody making a left, or is there somebody coming north on Diamond?" That's the only conflict they have to look at. And if they don't see that, not a lot of them stop, they roll through and make that right turn. That's the way drivers are today. So if you choke that down, you lose those right turn lanes, which slightly decreases the capacity in the intersection. You could put a hard median out there where the left turn lane was, that has now been removed with the always-stop. That allows pedestrians to cross part of the road, store, and then cross the rest. In any event, public education would have to be undertaken because younger children, we believe, are less adept in crossing a roadway than we as adults are. Again, our drivers today, even though we are required to stop when it's properly signed, a pedestrian wants to cross in a crosswalk, the law says we're supposed to stop, we don't do that unless we are unusual, and we see somebody waiting, wanting to cross, and we stop. We all are careful to look in our rearview mirror before we do that, because we might get rear-ended. So it's a difficult situation, but if you would go to reverting back to these side street control, we request, we would recommend you do some intersection treatments for the pedestrians. One thing I like that I've seen down over in St. Paul, and people think it's kind of hokey, but it works. I've been there, I've done it, and I've watched it. The flags. They have canisters on the corners with flags. Someone wants to cross, they get out there and they start waving the flag, and you'd be surprised how many, how people will stop. And the people then cross, waving the flag, they get across, they deposit the flag in the canister on the other side and go on their way. It works. I was surprised, it works. So that is, that is what we would consider, ask you to consider for Diamond. The Vine Street, Wisconsin area has a safety issue, more crashes than we think should be there. We do believe in the always-stop today. However, we also think you should consider a roundabout at that intersection. Takes away any delay situations. It's safer for automobiles. Will be able to reduce the amount of crashes, the left turns and right angles that are happening today. A roundabout takes care of that type of crash. It virtually eliminates it. And with the pedestrian issue, I think that can be solved also with a roundabout. So that would be one of the things we would consider for you. So again, that's the basic recommendations. The corridor works quite well. Additional delay is being incurred. Obviously, you put in another stop on Diamond, more delay. I should mention on the travel time runs that it does take approximately, sometimes it takes a little bit longer to go around, sometimes it doesn't. We don't think there's a lot of people doing that. There are some. We agree, there are some people doing it. We took some counts on the Hunter and White Pine, I can't remember the names. All the volumes are below 1,000 vehicles per day. One was at 700, one was at like 400. Anytime we have a roadway of less than 1,000 vehicles per day, we still consider that to be in the realm of a residential street. So you got 400, 500 cars a day, you've still got residential street volumes. However, I do believe there are some people that are using these routes to get around the two-stop signs that they run into on Grandview and Diamond. Some of the people are doing it because... Some of the people are doing it because maybe on occasion, they just want a different, a view of the roadway. They drive Vine every day. Every once in a while, they take this around, around the route just for a different view. I do it. I have three different ways I can go to work where I work. I change just for a different view every once in a while. But, there is a time penalty for the stop signs today, but we don't think it's enough of a penalty that it's drawing people around. So, you have a difficult decision to do, to make with regard to what to do with Diamond, what to do with Wisconsin, and I think Grand View probably works very well the way it is today. The technical analysis says one thing. We know there are many other things to consider. The pedestrian safety is probably as important or more important than anything else. That is your decision you get to make after reviewing this further and thinking about it. Now, I will be quiet and try to field some questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheldon. Any questions, Mr. Johnson?
I have some. Shelley, what about third and fourth street intersections? You don't touch on those.
Yeah, we did look at them. We didn't count them, but I've driven those quite a bit, being in Hudson quite a bit. I think I leave both of those as four-way stops for one reason. It gives an alternative for downtown traffic to get off of Second Street, which is a slower street because of the parking, the pedestrian activity, and all the activity on the street. People are coming out of downtown that want to go to Vine. It's a nice little bypass. For instance, I use it when I go home at night, when I leave this building. I go north to the stop sign, make my left because I can use the signal to get on Second Street to go back south. I know there's a signal down here, but I'm facing north. And so, I use that. And I think a lot of people use it. It's a nice way to get to Vine. The volumes are lesser there. The queues we observed aren't very long. They were like sixty, seventy feet at its longest during the peak hour. That's only three cars that have to go through there. So, we think you should leave that as it is because I believe third and fourth, both are collectors. Is that right, Denny? I think they are, as I looked at the functional classification map. So, again, I think that's good control for those two locations.
I just find it interesting that you suggest eliminating this four-way stop at the busiest intersection on the road and suggest leaving the four-way stops at the least intersection, the least busy intersections for less volume.
The busyness of Diamond is because of the Y.
Right.
There are plenty of gaps to get out without it. Diamond is not a collector, it's a local street. That is probably the basic reason we're saying we'd recommend, from a technical point of view, that you go back to the cross-street stop. The Grand View and Wisconsin are collector facilities where we want the traffic to be. The Diamond always-stop, some of the people that do go around, they make that left turn at Diamond going westbound, they find their way through. Again, it's not a big number, but we know some people are doing it.
What about, since all these intersections really don't technically warrant a stop, four-way stop, what about taking them all out and making them, you know, highly visible crosswalks versus stop signs?
Well, you can do the highly visible crosswalks with or without, with the always-stop. You can still do that.
No, I know that.
But, I wouldn't, I wouldn't remove the always-stops at Third, Fourth, Grand View, or Wisconsin. I wouldn't leave them. The high school is the critical issue at Wisconsin Street. I mean, you have to have some way to assign the right-of-way in a more positive manner for that high school traffic. The always-stop does that.
They're busy for two times a day.
That's correct.
Do you not have crossing guards or something there to?
Well, you could do that if somebody is, somebody wishes to pay for a police, it's got to be, in my mind, it has to be police patrolled, not an adult guard that directs traffic. I think it has to be police enforced. I live not too far from a school that does that. During the morning for a half an hour, they have a policeman out there, and when he sees enough of a build, but people wanting to get in, he stops traffic and he shuttles them in, in the same way at night to help them out. Works fine. School has to pay for that. That service has to be paid for by somebody, and it has to be out there twice a day. And I think that's, it's a good traffic control measure. I mean, these guys are pretty good at it. These policemen that know how to do this are very good at it. But, I think given you've got other activities at the school, you've got evening events, basketball plays, drama, what have you, I think the always-stop control is something I would leave, but I would consider the roundabout because that's, that's safe. That's much safer than an always-stop.
Thank you, Sheldon. If there are no other questions.
I have.
How about your opinion, Shelley, on a flashing yellow light in the middle with the ability to push it, a pedestrian pushing it, turning it, running across?
I've seen that done, and you know, I would have to check to see if it's legal in Wisconsin. It's not legal in some states. Some states won't allow it, and I don't know if Wisconsin does. I'd have to check on that. But, that is a control measure that works as long as you can educate the people to push that thing and wait. Sometimes people push it and they keep pushing it like, why isn't it changing?
Sure.
Well, it changes within its cycle. That's how you design it. It's not going to happen immediately. On occasion, it does, but not usually. And you see people hitting it at signals that have walk lights. You see them hitting this thing like, why, why isn't it changing? And some just completely ignore it then and try to find their way across. So, there's an enforcement aspect of that also. But, they used to do that a lot, and you don't see a lot of it anymore.
Yeah, I think you had a question.
Yeah, another question. You talked about medians. If we were to put in a median on the east side where the sidewalk is today, the sidewalk on the east side, if we took out the left turn lane, which turns into Diamond, which the flow of traffic into Diamond is less than that into the YMCA, put a median there, it would mean people turning into Diamond would block traffic for a minute when they had turned in, but it would give that, that space where a pedestrian could stop and then cross the second piece of traffic. Not doing it on both sides of the intersection because the left into the YMCA is just about as important as the right into the YMCA.
If we do a median on one leg, for instance, you know, you do it on the east leg or the west leg, whatever, you should do it on the other. We call the shadowing effect. We want to make sure that people that are driving in the direction without the median, we want to make sure they stay in that through lane. We don't want them to wander in that area without a median and then run into that median that's on the other side. So, we would, we would want a short median. We would, the left turn lane would have to be removed permanently with that median.
Right. Turning left into Diamond.
That's correct, from both directions.
Yeah, I see what you're talking about, that somebody could theoretically, as if they're going to turn into the Y but go straight ahead anyhow.
Yeah. It, it, it.
But, there would also be a sign there that says yield to pedestrians and?
Well, you still want to do that, definitely. You want to sign the bejebers out of it.
Is that as much of an issue on a twenty-five mile an hour road as if it's on a fifty mile an hour road?
No, it is not. It is not. Because there's less reaction time when you're driving twenty-five as if you're driving forty or fifty.
And so, I'm just wondering how important that shadowing would be at that intersection.
Well, it's important from a safety aspect. And if you're, if you're going to put a median on one leg, the cost to just put some type of median, we're not talking about, think, something that's a half a block long. You put the median in, then you do some painting, you taper it, and so that, so it's not a, cost-wise, it's not as big an addition to the project, would you decide to do it on one leg versus let's do it on both?
I was just trying not to lose the left turn lane into the YMCA.
You've lost it today. It's not there today.
I know that today, today we have the stop sign there.
Right, it's not there today.
But, if we look at changes to that intersection, what would be the most effective?
Well, it's just that the left turner has to be in the through lane, and he has to wait for his gap to make the turn, which adds, adds some delay to the people behind him. That's correct.
Interestingly, though, you have the same thing going both directions at the high school, and depending on what time of day it is, people know, kind of know what lane they're supposed to be in. Because if you're going, in the morning, the people that are going the straight lane, what would be normally considered a straight lane, are turning left into school, and the people that are going through on Vine know to get into the right lane.
That's correct.
Whereas, other times of day, you go straight in the middle lane and you take a right on Wisconsin, so, you know, it's kind of a learned thing, at least at that intersection. And that intersection's the same as what you're talking about.
But, Lee, keep in mind, the median I'm suggesting is only to make the crossing shorter of Vine.
Yes.
You cross to one point, now you've got someplace to store.
Yep.
Out of traffic. You're on a median, and you can see your gap and then finish it. That's the only reason.
Right, precisely. And that's why I was trying to figure out how not to lose the ease of getting in and out of the Y.
It's a tough intersection. It really is, and that's why you have to consider the pedestrian safety versus the traffic flow aspects.
I'd like to make a recommendation that we send all these, all these recommendations to safety and let them come to us with what we should do. Because, I mean, there's a lot of good ones in here. That flag one, I would just like to say Bayport has it over there in Minnesota. Excellent. That Highway ninety-five over there is busier than Vine, and those people get out, wave those cars. When Anderson people are leaving, they stop.
True.
And they got them on every corner over there, so.
I'll second that motion. Okay, we're now open for discussion. I believe there are some people in the audience who would like to be heard. Is that correct? Please come up to the microphone. Thank you, Sheldon. Come up to the microphone, identify yourself, please, and state your residence for the record.
My name is Mike Culver. I live on twenty-two forty-one Ruby Road, which is on the corner of Ruby and Diamond. And we've been, it's been a neighborhood issue. Obviously, you guys remember, I've been here, I'm here to represent the neighborhood. Throughout the whole report, I didn't read the report, but what you've just summarized, I have not heard a single compelling argument as to why to remove the stop signs. He said mathematically, statistically, it's a tough call. You know, when we talk about Wisconsin Street, obviously, the high school kids, and that's where the most kids are crossing the street, we have to think about who is crossing the street and why. And we're talking about high school kids crossing the street there. In Vine Hills, we've got over eighty kids under the age of fifteen years old. Most of the people in Vine Hills are members of the YMCA. We're talking about a lot younger kids crossing the street there, and the reason why is to go to the YMCA. Now, a lot of the high school kids, because I, I work from home, I live in the neighborhood, I have noticed since school started that we have not seen a increase on traffic on Diamond, which was a concern we had, that people would turn on Grand View. And we're, quite honestly, we're concerned about the high school kids turning on Grand View when school is out, turning south, south on Grand View, and then taking a left into Stone Pine and then down to Diamond to cut that line. But, we haven't really seen any increased traffic on Diamond, and I live right on the corner there, on the second house in on the left. So, we haven't seen any increased traffic, and I haven't seen any really increased lines and queues any different than what it used to be. The other thing that I found interesting was between the YMCA or Diamond and Carmichael is where the most traffic was. I'm curious if the report states what the average speed is there, too. Not only is that Diamond intersection wider than Grand View and Wisconsin Street, but also I find that westbound or eastbound traffic is driving much faster, and, and that's a big concern when we're crossing the street as well. Well, I think that something needs to be done. Obviously, as a neighborhood, as a community, we strongly ask for the stop sign. We also are open to other suggestions. The flag idea, I think, you know, is, I've seen it in Bayport, but I think we're putting the burden on the wrong people. I don't think that twelve-year-old kids may necessarily be the ones that we should put in charge of crossing the street safely. I mean, obviously, they have to be taught and so forth, but I think that some of the burden has to be placed on the drivers. And as far as the median goes, I don't know if I'm comfortable with my children standing in between two moving lanes where in a known speed area where, I would say, a vast majority of the traffic there is speeding without the stop sign. Not only does the stop sign allow us to cross the street safely with our family, it gives us some peace of mind, obviously, more so than a crosswalk, more so than a flag, more so than a median, that at least people see a red stop sign, they know to stop. Sure, we're going to get some rolling. Sure, we're going to get some people turning right, but I do believe that by and large, any parent here would feel much safer with their child crossing a street with a stop sign than with a flag that they may or may not use depending on who's watching. So, I just want to strongly encourage, and I want to thank you guys for doing this report. I think it's great, but I really want to strongly encourage you guys that if there's no significant reason why to remove the stop sign, other than, you know, then we should keep it where it is. Living there and driving the way we've been driving, I have not noticed a backup in traffic.
I have to disagree. If you come down there in the morning, sir, from seven, again, it's certain times of the day, but it's backed all the way up to?
Up to?
All the way out to Carmichael.
Up to Carmichael? See, I haven't?
Seven o'clock in the morning. Well, I drive that.
On the way to school?
And granted, it's the same thing at Vine and Wisconsin. It's certain times of the day, but, you know, and again, there used to be something of a backup at Grand View, you know, in the morning, but, I mean, not saying yes, no, or anything you're saying, but there is, and it's again, it's at school times, it's at when those, the traffic's coming in in the morning and when they're leaving in the afternoon.
And then that leads me to my next concern, is that obviously, I think we all could agree that by and large, the majority of the traffic on that road from Carmichael to Diamond does not obey the speed limit. So, if it is backed up like that and we remove that stop sign, I think that we're going to see even more speeders, and I just, I just think it's an increased risk.
Well, thank you for your comments, and don't thank us for this report because you and everybody else in Hudson's paying for it. Now, is there anyone else who wishes to add to the comments before we vote? Okay. Again, your motion is to send this to Public Safety and ask for recommendations.
Yeah, have them bring to us what, because, I mean, there's four or five good ideas in there. Let them, you know, what do we want to do?
Sure.
I think that, I think you guys can do a little more in-depth on it and tell us what.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie Jean Adams, thank you very much. Onto new business. Ordinance number seventeen dash oh-six regarding two thousand and seven appropriations for municipal operations. Call on our finance director, Betty Crusoe, once again. Could you step up to the microphone and give us the summary?
Devin actually put together his binder, so he probably should present it, and then I've got some additional information to give you, so.
And as I said, there are copies available for the public if they'd like to pick these up. They're condensed versions of what the county council has. The ordinance is to recommend the total operational budget, which includes the debt service levy for two thousand and seven, is recommended at eight million, four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars, which is a decrease from last year of approximately under, just around three percent. There's a number of factors that went into that. The tax levy limits reduce the amount that's available for us to spend. We also, there's a less of a, at this point in the budget, there's less of a debt levy than we had last year, so that's part of the reason, too. As far as expenditures, we, anywhere we could cut, we cut. We based a lot of our cuts on historical figures. We tried to get, look the last few years and say, okay, what have we spent? And there's a possibility that in the past few years, maybe the budget was higher than it should have been. There are also some accounts that Betty and I went through, mainly utility accounts, where we actually increased the budget because they were under-budgeted in the past. And what, what was happening was they were being under-budgeted, but we still had to pay them. You know, utility bills, you have to pay, so even if the budget, you can't say, no, we're not going to pay the electric bills or whatever. There was, with revenue, there was a major decrease, one hundred and forty-five thousand, thirty-five thousand in building inspection fees because the building has gone down in the city, so we did have to make that adjustment. You will notice, included in this budget are two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars worth of what could be considered short-term capital projects, and I've listed those on this sheet here. Those are the items that do not have the lifespan, if you will, to justify bonding for ten or twenty years or whatever we decide to do when you do the capital, the big capital projects. Includes things like some of the benches in the parks, squad vehicles, additional money for the comprehensive plans, we can keep going on that, there's fifty thousand in there for that, a copy, or computer, minor computer upgrades, those type of things. I don't know if you have any specific questions on expenditures or revenue. If not, or you think about it, you can ask them. The valuation, we have estimated that, we won't know the final assessed valuation until after some of you do the board review next week. We estimated that in the binder here, lower than what the number actually is, by about twenty million dollars. $20 million. And the reason we did that is we didn't want to, when we're giving people an idea of what the tax rate might be, we wanted to be conservative. We wanted to be a little higher than it may actually be. It will be around $1.5 billion, is what the new assessed valuation. And that's up from $947,000. So it's up about a third from what it was last year. And that's because we were at about 67% of where we should have been with our valuations. As a general rule of thumb, what we've been telling people and what they've been telling them during open book is that if your increase over last year in the valuation was 50% or less, then your tax rate will either be the same or go down. So 50%, 52% is the threshold. So if you take what last, take your increase, divide it into last year's number, if it's less than 50%, your taxes will either be the same or go down. If it's more, then they'll go up. So that's kind of where we're on the valuation. Obviously, the mill rate's going down because we have a lot more, the assessed mill rate will be going down from, including TIF, from 585 to 398. And obviously, the reason is, is because our valuation, assessed valuation is going up. Our equalized value now, equalized and assessed will finally will be equal this year, obviously, because we'll be at close to 100%. The overall tax rate, which is towards the end, including all the taxing districts, will be somewhere between 1418, actually, between 14 and 1450, depending where our final numbers come in. We have been using 1450 when we've been talking to people on the phone or in person, because, again, we're trying to be conservative so that when they come in and ask how much their taxes might be. We don't have our school tax credit. But there is a substantial, last year the mill rate was 2167. And this year we're estimating between 14 and 1450. So I don't know if there's any specific questions that, you know, there's a, a number of different things in here that, trying to analyze the different aspects of the budget. We do have full printouts available as well if there's specific questions. One last thing, that we're estimating the tax increment financing district this year will be about $2.6 million going into the district, which will bring the total in 10 years to almost $12 million. So it's been this very successful tax increment district, so...
Betty, anything you care to add?
I think the key factors here is going to be my, my, my favorite part of it is the fund balance. And I handed out some sheets to you because of my concerns for the fund balance and how we need to monitor this. In the 2007 budget, we're estimating about $160,000 that we are short to cover all the expenditures. The, that money is going to come from the fund balance. And so my concern is to, to let the council know where the fund balance is going. I gave you a worksheet that I continue all the time to monitor our fund balance because it's, it's a key factor that we have to have for operations and also for bonding. So on the back sheet I hand, I highlighted the, the numbers that are important. In 2006, we estimated $128,000 of deficit that we would have to fund with fund balance. It's coming in at about, let's see, it's coming in at $267,000 short. That has to do with not collecting building permits that we had budgeted, some budget overruns. But what I'm estimating right now, instead of being a short $128,000, we're going to be short $267,000. That's going to come from the fund balance. As we take from the fund balance and with the levy limits that are in place, we have no way to replenish our fund balance. We spend the money that we get, we're short the money that we get. And so at this point, we have to really monitor when we take from the fund balance. Contingencies come up, we either have to decide not to do them, or if we do them, we take them from the fund balance. So our fund balance is a key factor that we have to keep, and there's no way to replenish. So what I did is I put together where we're going to be at the end of 2007 based on this budget. Our operating or our fund balance that's unreserved that we report and that I use for operations will be about $1,017,000. Right now, it's at $1,333,000. So we're dropping $300,000 over these two-year period. That's where my concern comes in. So if you flip it, well, actually, I'll stay on the backside still. If you look at where we were, down at the very bottom, it says 2005, our undesignated fund balance was 25% of our budget. That's a good, healthy position. That's when we went to Moody's for our bond rating. That's when they upgraded us at our bond rating. We went from A2 to an A1. Now, if you go over to the 2000 projected, we're down to 15% of our budget. And so now, if you flip over, this is what I asked Ellers to do for us, is put us in where there's other communities that have the rating like us, to see how we compare. And so Hudson's right in the middle, and you can see that we have a 15,000, or 15% undesignated general fund balance. In comparison, River Falls has a 61%, Manona 25%, and Brown Deer 19%. We're not in a danger zone yet, but we could eventually get there if we don't address this. So this is something we have to address in the future. I think at our December 18th meeting, we're going to be addressing our tax increment district and how we're going to treat that, what our plans are. We also have to address the issue, if the tax levy limits ever come off of us, how are we going to address our fund balance? So this is just one, one of the things that I wanted to point out to you, the importance of keeping this. And when we go into the future, we probably have to look at more budget cuts so that we can meet and keep our fund balance at a minimum of 15% of operations. So, other than that, the other thing I wanted to point out is one thing that's different in the budget this year is we have some short-term financing for the capital outlay. And those are the things that Devin had said, like the copy machines or the police cars. Part of the levy limit restricts what we can do with operations. And so if it's over in debt, we can actually issue debt levy for it. So one of the things that is being proposed to you is a short-term, like a 13-month note that the city would issue for about $240,000. And that's built into this budget. And what I'd like council to do for tonight is give me permission to proceed with some bids from the banks to see if I can get some short-term financing. What I would do is I would pay that off probably come March, when we get our tax revenue. So we would finance our capital outlay and pay it off in March.
Betty, is that, would that require a separate motion? I guess I should ask this of Catherine, too?
Um...
As opposed to...
If it's in the budget, probably not.
So just like, if we pass the resolution, which I understand you need passed tonight, the new ordinance?
It would be helpful. It isn't absolutely mandatory because we are, in the past, we needed it done because we needed the tax bills out. We're not quite sure when we're going to get our numbers in, board reviews next week. If there were concerns or questions or whatever, it theoretically could be delayed two weeks, but...
And I will come with that total financing package, the first meeting in December, for your adoption.
So doing a first reading tonight would be okay with you?
For what?
Well, if...
The ordinance. That's the agenda item, is the ordinance.
The agenda item for the tax levy, you quit it up.
Kara, this has been published for a month. The public's had the opportunity to come in and get the budget. We're not forcing anybody to do anything. The reason we usually do it at this meeting is because we want to get the tax bills out to the public. But this, I, when you're saying we're forcing you to do this, I have a little bit of an issue with that because the public has been made aware of this for four weeks. Not a single person has come in and, so it's not like we're trying to hide anything. It's not like we're trying to pull something over the public's eye.
I'm not implying that we're trying to hide anything. But the point is, our budget hearing was tonight. While no one showed up, this was the first public budget hearing. And I'm just saying, I'm uncomfortable with doing it. And by not, if we will go to first reading, what basically being said is that Betty cannot go out and do those short-term things. So technically, if we support this budget, we are being forced to suspend the rules because otherwise, it's not going to get passed.
And in every other year, we would be recommending you do it tonight as well because we would need to get the tax...
No, and every other year, I voted against suspending the rules. So it's, for me, it's an issue.
It's unfortunate. The issue, Kara, we run into is we're required by state law to do things in certain timeframes. We have to publish this at a certain date, which puts us to the end of November, which pushes us out into the middle of December to get the tax bills out. So it's, it's, I'm not, I understand what you're saying. But on the flip side, us passing this tonight, unless there's concerns, and we certainly can address those concerns, you know, I don't, as a staff, I don't see any problems with, with what's here.
Well, how does it impact Betty if we wait two weeks to...
Because then she can't...
I know she can't do what she needs to do, but she doesn't need to do that until...
Yes, she does.
Right?
I, I could proceed with getting bids and presenting them at the next council meeting along with the budget.
No, you could not because it isn't, we, they are not approving this budget.
Yeah, that's what she said.
You said you could, go ahead.
I could.
$140,000 worth of budget, barring. You can't go ahead and get the bids for it if it's not approved.
Catherine, what's your opinion?
Well, she could get quotes and get information on what people are willing to do, I think. And she'd have to make it clear that this is not a binding, I mean, it's just basically contacting banks to tell them what we're looking at and see what they can provide. It's not anything binding. So it wouldn't be binding on them, it wouldn't be binding on the city. It'd be more informational. I think she could do that without having the budget approved.
I'm just curious.
So there's no real good reason to, to pass this tonight?
But what is the reason not to?
Because you just want to, you don't want to suspend the rules.
We don't, we don't want Betty coming to us with non-binding quoted, quotes from banks who could then say, oh, just kidding, you know. I mean, the quote we get from, we have to do something, we have to ask the bank, knowing that they're going to be bound, the bank has to know they're going to be bound by their quote. And if, as Catherine just said, if, you know, they could come back with something non-binding. Well, that's useless to us. If it's not binding, if we go back and say, okay, we're going to take that off, remove that interest rate, and they can say, yeah, you know, we changed. Wasn't binding.
Well, I think, what is your process, Betty? Why don't you just explain that?
What I would do is I would solicit the banks, the local banks, to see if they would be interested in financing the city. They would send me back usually what they were willing to do at a, a certain interest rate. Then I would just, it's basically like a bid process. And then we would just figure out which one was to the betterment of the city. And we would then come to the council. I still have to have council resolution and authorization with the payback schedule. So I'd have all that information on December 3rd, but I would just seek out quotes at this point. And they usually bind those for 30 days. They'll usually give them to me for 30 days.
So is this appropriation ordinance going to change? Is this going to make a difference if we postpone it two weeks?
No. Unless, unless there's something that you as a council see tonight or the public sees that this is...
Well, the public has, gives them more time to input. What if they look at it now and they say, well, wait, I want to talk about this. And we pass the ordinance already. I know no one has done it yet, Devin, but my point is...
But it's been four weeks, Kara. I, I would think that if someone saw this in the paper and was going to make a comment or had a concern about the budget or with the 400 people we've had here for board review, someone would have stopped in. And I, I don't understand what, what waiting two weeks, nothing is going to change, why we, what another two weeks is going to make a difference.
It's on TV.
They've all left by now.
I don't understand what, why we have to do it if we have the option to have a first reading.
Yeah. I, I think we are repeating ourselves. So we're going to call the question, well, we're getting the, we're in the middle of getting the roll call vote, were we not? So let's continue with the roll call.
Moore said?
Can we recall, is this to...
Just to suspend the rules.
The motion wants to suspend the rules. We need two thirds.
Wyler?
No.
O'Connell?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Otomaker?
Yes.
Cook?
No.
Motion fails.
No, two thirds.
No, you have four.
Four.
Yeah.
So now, we can entertain a motion. Does anyone care to make a motion regarding resolution number 17-06?
Move to accept resolution.
Ordinance.
Ordinance number 17-06. Thank you.
I'll second that motion. Just for clarification, this is to approve an ordinance for a total operating and maintenance and outlay for the operation of the city for 2007 of $8,438,000. He's going to change my last number.
No, you're right. No, I just, you also have to mention the tax levy stuff.
Yes. $8,438,623. And the guy who's pulling the strings in the back of my neck will tell me, we are levying a tax of $5,293,304 upon all property within the city of Hudson as returned by the assessor in the 2006 for the uses and purposes set forth in said budget. Roll call vote again on an ordinance?
Well, if there's any question as to votes, we need four votes to, to adopt the ordinance.
Okay, let's do it by raising hands so we know first time out. All in favor of approving the 2007 appropriation ordinance 17-06, please signify by raising your hand. Well, there's nobody opposed, so it's carried. Thank you very much.
And as I said, we have copies available here. And if the council would like a detailed printout, we have copies available of that as well.
Under further new business, we have received a letter of inquiry from Cedar Corporation, who, without saying so, would very much like to replace our current consulting engineers, BRA, the people who've been with us here all evening. This is the time, isn't it, when we redo that contract? Any, when do we redo the contracts with BRA?
It could be reconfirmed. It was my understanding, there's going to be discussion on rates and so forth in the very near future. So it might be coming up in the next couple meetings.
Thank you. Well, they want to discuss that. They want to pitch us for the business. So we want to authorize the, to Devin, I guess, to send out a letter saying, okay, come around on such and such a date. I will now direct Devin to send a letter.
And I, I think we should give a couple. What's wrong?
Well, we've only got one in front of us, so let's deal with what's in front.
All right. But you know what I'm...
Is that a second?
Okay.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we do correspond with Cedar Corporation.
You could put out a request for...
That's what I'm asking, whether legally we have to put out.
Well, under state law, you don't. But under your finance, under the city's policy, yeah, it's recommended.
What I will do is I will develop a request for proposal with the help of the staff, obviously. And we'll proceed accordingly.
So we'll just amend that to have authorized Devin to create an RFP. Is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay with the seconded?
Yes.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Carrie, thank you very much. And I'm not talking to Angela anymore tonight. Under communications and recommendations of the mayor, he is not here with us, but he has asked that we do reappoint Ms. Barbara Burke to another five-year term on the Hudson Housing Authority. I'm asking for a motion that we do confirm that we appoint.
Second.
Moved and seconded that we reconfirm, reappoint, rather, Barbara Burke of Donegal Court in Hudson for another five-year term on the Hudson Housing Authority. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We're really getting to the end. Communications from the, I guess, the acting mayor, the president. I want to thank everyone who stayed this long, whether watching on television or here in the city hall, for a very long meeting. It is the price you pay for a full airing of all the issues. City attorney?
Nothing here.
Devin, city administrator?
Alder persons.
Any, oh, excuse me. We'll get to them.
They're first on the list.
Any Alder, yes.
Real quick, I'd like to thank the Public Works Department downtown, and the city looks great, and all the businesses that contributed to that. Thank you.
Jim, I say you're welcome. Anyone else? Entertaining the motion to adjourn?
So...
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.